Good evening, and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's Mayor and Common Council. During the public health crisis, we will be conducting our meetings remotely, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center. We'll begin, as we do every meeting, with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online and on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on July 27th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved.
Second.
There's been a motion from Mr. Dayhoff, and a second from Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Does the opposed say nay? Objection, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Reports from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
No real reports from me, because I'm sure you're going to cover them in the Finance Committee portion of reports. We've just been working on hiring a new finance director, so I'll let the chair of that committee handle that when it comes around, but that's when, it's a lot of our time to go into it right now. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've added an item to our agendas for the duration of the pandemic crisis. It's, you know, an update on the city's efforts to deal with it. Ms. Matthews, do we have anything to update people on tonight? Ms. Matthews, are you there? She seems to be having some trouble checking in tonight. Mr. Mayor, are you aware of anything that we need to update people on tonight?
No, not really to COVID-19. I don't think there's anything pressing. I, do you know, I had some trouble getting into Zoom meeting earlier, and I think Councilman Cavaci did, so I don't know if something's set up a little differently, or if there's something going on, but maybe Ms. Matthews is having a similar issue, just, yeah, because nothing COVID-19.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Very good.
This is Tony.
Yeah, we can hear you, Tony.
I can't get in, in this frickin' Zoom thing, but I'm able to call in, so I, we're gonna have to live with that. I, it will not accept me.
All right, well, we'll figure that out for next time, and, yeah. Are there any, let's do stand, reports from standing committees. Mr. Dayhoff, anything for the Arts Council tonight?
Yes, sir. The excellent show that Steve Baurisox, the history teacher over at the high school, put together on folks from Westminster who participated in World War II, that show just completed. But we're excited to announce two new in-person art exhibits at the Arts Council. One is going to be called Capture, and it's going to feature the photography work of the Carroll County Camera Club, and that is usually a lot of really excellent work. And then we're also going to have another show, and I believe it's going to be upstairs, and it's going to be called "The Art of Protest," and it's going to be a collection of the homemade signs used in a variety of the 2020 protests. Both are going to be open and free to the public during normal business hours. I also need to call to everyone's attention, that registration is now open for the 18th Annual Members Show. You need to register by August the 31st, and this show, this yearly show, exhibits the talents of local Arts Council members, and it's usually a lot of fun. This year's show is going to be from September the 28th through October the 31st. Madam City Clerk, I'll go, I'll send those words to you for my report afterwards, and that'll be my report, Mr. President, unless there's any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Yingling.
No report. The EDC will be meeting, I think, pretty soon about an opportunity coming out into Air Park Center, so should have something to report in the next couple of weeks. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yingling. For the Finance Committee, as the mayor alluded to earlier, we did conduct interviews last week for our, for our Finance Director position, and had some good candidates, a good process, and, you know, so I hope that the mayor will soon have an announcement to be able to make on who he is nominating, so we will look forward to that when that works out. I want to thank the mayor for including me in the process, and I'm confident that we're going to have a good result out of this. There will be, as I assured our colleagues, you know, previously, there will be an opportunity for the members of the council to meet this individual, you know, at least virtually, prior to the announcement being made, and prior to the evening of the vote, so we will make sure that there is some time between when the council meets the mayor's nominee and the council meeting where they are expected to vote on the person. And that's all I have on that. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert. I'm sorry, you're still muted, Ms. Gilbert.
Sorry, nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, you guys able to hear me?
We can. You're loud and clear.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. It's a little, yeah, sorry. Okay, good. Okay, so, couple of things. Number one, we swore in four, the mayor swore in four police officers on Friday at, early in the morning, and they're graduating from the academy tomorrow, so they'll be, you know, available to us to start their training. Of course, that doesn't mean they're going to be on the road right away. They go through a pretty expensive OJT training, extensive OJT training period, so they won't be actually available to be out patrolling right away, but it's very exciting to have them on board. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for handling the swearing-in. I was supposed to have been there, but due to stupidity on my part, I missed the swearing-in, and I do apologize for that. The, a couple of other things, crime is still continuing to run pretty significantly below average for this time of the year, and while, no question, you know, the whole COVID situation and everything going on, I'm sure is playing somewhat of a role in that, I also have little doubt that the good job that our men and women on WPD are doing plays a pretty big role in it as well. I know that between our detectives and the task force, task forces, and our, just our regular patrols, we've had some pretty significant apprehensions, and some things that are very positive in terms of reducing crime over the past half a year or so, and I firmly believe that, that's also playing a factor, so I'd like to compliment them on a job well done in keeping that number down. Another thing of note is, you know, our Police Department is coordinating with the Health Department under a grant program that is, it's a diversion program, where they are working specifically on folks that have addiction issues, they're bringing in counseling and things like that as crises occur, and diverting these folks from going into the judicial system and, and kind of guiding them into more treatment programs to try to help them get better, and at the same time, keeping them out of the judicial program, which ultimately, I think, is a very positive thing. I think it's, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction in dealing with some of the addiction issues that we do have, and I'd like to thank the chief and his staff for stepping up and becoming part of that program. There's a lot of training that goes on related to it, and work and effort. It's not simple, but they're doing a good job, and we're already starting to start, starting to see some, some results of that. We've already had, I know at least, some positive incidents that have already taken place, where folks have been able to be guided into the help that they need versus going to jail. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean, you know, we're being soft on crime, it just means we're trying to get people the help that they need in certain circumstances, so I think that's a good thing. One last note that I'd like to make before I give it back to you, Mr. President, the Black Lives Matter group that's been working downtown every day and, and holding their, you know, their, their event every afternoon, they held a much larger event at City Hall about a week and a half ago, and I actually went down to it with my youngest son, who happens to be a minority, and the two of us went down and, and listened to the speakers, and I have to say, I was, I was really impressed with the peacefulness and, you know, some of the messaging that took place, and one thing I'd like to note that I was, I was really impressed by, I watched one of the organizers go around, she, she went over, got a bunch of water bottles, and then walked around the perimeter of the event and handed water bottles out to every police officer that was there, which I thought was, it impressed me, seeing that. I felt like there was good things said, but they were not necessarily derogatory things towards our Police Department or the Sheriff's Department, and I was, I was happy for that and appreciative, but most of all, I'm just happy and appreciative that folks are able to, you know, utilize their First Amendment rights, they're out there, and they're, they're saying what they feel like needs to be said, and, and hopefully making a difference in the community, but doing it in a peaceful, you know, manner, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm sure we all are. So, that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci, that was, that was an important message there. Public Works Committee, Mr. Yingling.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
Yes, Mr. President. When I get a chance, I'll catch up with the mayor. I think the mayor had sent a request out just recently about taking another look at bringing back the Wreck and Parks Board, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of thoughts about that, and I'll talk to the, I had a conversation with the council president about it, and, and we'll talk with you, but maybe we can put the word out that if folks are interested in being on the Parks and Recreation Board for the city of Westminster, that maybe they could get in touch with, or send an email over to the, our Recreation and Parks Department, and with a brief 750-character letter of interest as to why it is that they would want to serve on that board. I mean, does that sound okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
I think they should send in something that's 20,000 words each, and it should be directed to you.
Yes, sir.
Once you read through those, highlight the important parts, then you can just send it over to me.
And I will, I will edit it according to modified AP, AP style. They will all be edited perfectly before I turn them over to you. Hey, Mr. President, I wanted, I wanted to make sure, I really, I really appreciated Mr. Cavaci's remarks. The Black Lives Matters folks downtown, they have been simply wonderful and very respectful to, to work with throughout the entire time, and I think the lead program that Mr. Cavaci mentioned, the diversion program, instead of arresting people, going to go out of our way to get these folks the mental health and provide them the resources that they need, and I think that's just another cutting-edge program for the city of Westminster, and I really appreciated Mr. Cavaci bringing that to our attention. So I guess the one action item is, is that, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and move ahead with, see what we can do about that Parks and Rec Board for you. Thank you.
So, let me, let me just add to that, that the Parks Board is a body appointed by the mayor, so, Mr. Mayor, that's in your hands, we'll look to you to how you'd like to proceed with that, but, you know, I think it is valuable to, to get one reappointed. So with that, we'll move on to council comments and discussion. We'll start with Mr. Cavaci, anything else you'd like to mention tonight?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize, it seems like I'm talking a lot at the beginning of this meeting. So I attended a couple-hour work session on East Middle School's, you know, rebuilding, or the replacement for East Middle School. I did that along with Ms. Gerhart from our Planning and Zoning Department, from our Planning Department, and it was incredibly informative. It, I think it's the third or fourth meeting that they've had, first one that I attended, and they're, they're doing some fantastic work in terms of the planning for this new important and impactful, you know, facility that's going to be within the city. I'd also quickly like to compliment Ms. Gerhart. It's obvious from the comments that were made in the meeting, and then one or two conversations I had outside of the meeting, that her input's been important, and she's played a really, really solid role in representing the city on that committee, and I'm appreciative that we have representation on the committee. I'm thankful to the school board and the school system for allowing that to happen. Very briefly, that things are moving along nicely, they're narrowing down the recommendation in terms of, of kind of the configuration and location of the new structure that they're going to present to the Board of Education. Ms. Gerhart and I were able to actually lend some input in terms of what we believed might be in the best interest of the city related to some, some decisions. One of them in particular is if you're familiar with how Longwell Avenue comes up, and as it passes across Key Street, which is the alley there that the school kind of sits on, it then takes a sharp left-hand turn to head down towards 97. That's always been a very dangerous area right there, because they've got the school parking lot on the other side of the road there, and the kids and teachers at times have to cross over that street, and, and it can be a little dangerous, and has been for a long time. And that, that being separated from the property presents other issues related to this new project. It kind of separates that parking lot out, which is school-owned property, out from the rest of, of the property that they own, and in all the different configurations that they were showing, one of the things that they were needing to do is to add a fair amount of parking onto the property to kind of eliminate the need for that, that parking so heavily up on that lot, because of the safety factor, and the distance is even going to be further now, that people will have to go where the school probably will sit. So it was going to require a fair amount of paving to be added to the, to the project over and above what's probably already there, or certainly what needed to be. Through some conversations with Ms. Gerhart and I, and the engineers, and the people in the school system, it became obvious that if we were to work with them to reroute Longwell slightly differently, so that it, it goes along the other side of that parking lot, it would allow them to utilize that, that piece of property much better, either for some additional green space, or including it in some parking, but in a manner that would significant, or at least substantially reduce the amount of paved area that would increase the amount of green space on the property, and it would also increase some safety as well. So I don't have anything to present to the council and mayor at this moment, but I'm, I'm using this as, as an, as an opportunity to kind of give you guys a heads-up, that at some point, we're probably going to be asked to reroute Longwell a little differently, based upon how it runs right now relative to the school, and it will probably also mean that we give a little bit of that property that's the roadway right now to the, to the county, to the school system. I can elaborate more if there's questions, but, but none of this is in stone, set in stone at this point. It's all just in the preliminary planning, but I felt it incumbent to make sure you guys are at least in the loop, considering that there, there may be a need to reroute the road a little bit, and potentially get, give some of the, that roadway over to the school system. That's all I have, Mr. President, unless folks maybe have some questions about it. I'm happy to, you know, answer any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci, and thank you for staying on top of that. I know you've been, you know, very active in all those discussions over a period of time, and it's good to know that we're being represented at that level in these continuing discussions. Move on now to Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Cavaci, for that report. I really appreciate it. That, that parking lot's needed to be reconfigured for a long, long time, and, and I think between the county and the school system and, and the city, I think we own all of that property there, so I think, I, I'll be particularly happy. I was also very happy that Mr. Depot, the Director of Planning, sent us those minutes and a report on East Middle School, and I really appreciated the opportunity to look over that. And, Mr. President, I want to, I don't want to let go of the fact that I'm not, did we, did we in particular ask for more information on the grant that was recently announced for Durbin House? We can look forward to an update on that in the future.
We have, Mr. Dayhoff, and unfortunately, we weren't able to have that presented to you tonight, but the expectation is that we'll have a
Sometime.
Briefing on, on the Wakefield Valley activities at the next meeting.
Okay, that, and an update on, we were looking forward to an update from the Public Works Director on the ENR work, and the work, the exciting work that's being done over at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then the other day, we noticed that the bids were open for the Wakefield Valley Master Plan, and I'm excited about that, and I'll look forward to that coming before the council and, and us moving forward with that. And several of us have talked among ourselves, and we're looking forward to more information about the roadway paving services. I'm looking at the bids on the Westminster's website now. Also, the inflow and infiltration rehabilitation project, and the shower room renovations over at the Westminster Family Fitness Center, and all of those bids are coming up, they're all in the works, and I'm, I'm happy that, I'm happy that we're moving forward with that. And I guess, I, in my, in my capacity as a, as a fire and police chaplain, I guess, I think, I don't want to miss an opportunity to say that we would all like to keep in our prayers the folks that have been horribly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. It seems like increasingly, there's not a family that's not affected negatively about it. We recently had a retired Westminster police officer who was affected negatively by it, so we want to keep all of them in our prayers. I think that's it, Mr. President. I'll turn it back over to you.
I thank you. And Ms. Gilbert? unmuted yourself, please.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And finally, Mr. Yingling. Anything, Mr. Yingling, you'd like to share?
No comment, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will now move on then to bids. We do have two bids tonight to discuss, and Mr. Glass, we'll go to you for the first one.
Yes, sir. The fiscal year '21 general fund budget allocates funding in the amount of $250,000 to replace a 10-ton multipurpose hook truck for the Street Department. The good news is, this vehicle is available through an existing contract through the state of Maryland, and Johnson Truck Center was the winner of that contract for this year. They're from Landover, Maryland. The other bit of good news is that the city's procurement code allows for us to piggyback on this competitively awarded contract. So the vehicle we're going to purchase, hopefully, with the final approval, is a Freightliner 10, yeah, 108 SD. It's complete with a salt body and snowplow as well. There's much more detail, obviously, in the specifications that are attached, but the total cost of the vehicle is $213,125, and that includes all the selected options as well. So at this point, our recommendation would be that the Mayor and Common Council authorize the purchase of the replacement Freightliner Hook Truck from Johnson Truck Center in Landover, Maryland, in the total amount of $213,125. And that's all I have, unless there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. May I have a motion?
You have a motion, a motion to accept the bid?
Second.
Motion to accept the bid by Mr. Dayhoff? Then there's been a second from Mr. Yingling. Is there any further discussion, or any questions for Mr. Glass?
One comment, one question?
Mr. Dayhoff.
And so, Mr. Glass, I also understand a lot of the hydraulic work on that hook truck is going to take place in Westminster.
That's correct. The race motor sales behind what was Bear Truck Center will do the fit-out, that's correct.
Good, good, good. This is, this is a good, this is a good thing. I'll call the question.
All right, well, is there anyone else that should be heard? All right, hearing no one else, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the bid on the replacement hook truck, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. Mr. Glass, you have your replacement hook truck. There you go. And next is Mr. Davidson on Managed Detection and Response, Managed Detection and Response Contract.
Good afternoon. Over the last several years, the city has made investments in technology, security, in the way of equipment and software. A risk assessment was completed by Continental Technologies in FYI 2020, including a recommendation that the city contract with a management detection and response provider to provide constant monitoring of the city technology network and hardware. The MDR service will provide the following: 24/7 alerts and hands-on security team for all hardware and network traffic; 24/7 hardware segregation from the network that has been compromised; 24/7 review of lateral network spread of malicious software; 24/7 alert of hardware reaching out to unknown bad actors and networks; weekly and monthly calls with the city staff to review all alerts and issues; and a full forensic investigation and breakdown of an intrusion or compromised system. SHI Corporation and Arctic Wolf have completed work for multiple Maryland counties and municipalities and many Maryland businesses. The quoted price is $51,512.31, was provided through using a bid process completed by the state of Maryland. The general water and sewer budget have the necessary funds for the award of the requested contract. A total of $60,000 was budgeted for this project. Staff recommends the council approve the contract of SHI Corporation and Arctic Wolf for Managed Detection and Response Service, as outlined above, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Davidson? Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, you want to go ahead and get a motion? This, I'll motion that we accept the
Yes.
The Managed Detection and Response Contract for Technology.
Second.
All right, thank you. And is there a second? The second from Mr. Yingling? So it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Davidson?
I do.
Mr. Dayhoff?
Yes. Mr. Davidson, I understand that we're going to soon be doing the testing and implementation of the multi-factor authentication for city employees. Is that part of that?
It's not part of that, but we will be doing, we have budget money for a multi-factor authentication this year. The IT staff, the administrators in the network are currently using multi-factor authentication.
So you'll be bringing that forward as, as soon as, as it's possible?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the other thing, if I'm not mistaken, the holding company for Arctic Wolf, SHI, that's a 100% minority-owned, woman-owned business, and I think it's important for the public and for folks to know that, that we as a city feel strongly about such matters, and the SHI and the Arctic Wolf has a such matters, and, and the S H I and the Arctic Wolf has an excellent reputation, so I think this is really good for, I think this is really good for the city. Information technology and, and security is, is, is going to be increasingly important, and I'm glad to see that, that we're moving forward and staying on the forefront of that. That's all my comments, Mr. Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? All right. I just want to thank the mayor for having launched a serious effort to look at these things a while back. I think, you know, we, we're all aware of the challenges that some other communities have faced, and he's been right in the middle of this, and his background in technology has been very helpful on this.
Yeah, we agree.
So thanks a lot to the mayor for having done that. So with no further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, and the ayes have it, and the bid is approved. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Move on now to ordinances and resolutions. The first is introduction of emergency ordinance number 926, an ordinance amending Chapter 164 zoning of the Code of the City of Westminster, Article 8, P D 4 Plan Development 4 Zone, Section 164-82, open space, and Article 24 subdivision regulation, Section 164-197.1, residential cluster, cluster subdivision, to replace references to the Parks Board with references to the Director of Recreation and Parks. Mr. Depot, I think you're going to talk about this for us?
Yes, thank you, and good evening. Again, for the Plan Development P D 4 Zoning District and the Residential Cluster Subdivision, both these have a requirement that in determining the type and location of common open space, the Planning and Zoning Commission, in consultation with the City Parks Board, shall review the area's need for parks and recreational sites in the area. So again, today, we have the standard that, that open space in consultation, and only these two instances, the P D 4 and the Residential Cluster Subdivision, must go before the City Parks Board for consultation purposes. It was discovered during a recently submitted site development plan proposing development in the P D 4 zoning district that the City Parks Board is no longer active. The city staff recommends that the Director of Recreation and Parks be designated to provide input regarding the need type and location of open space as opposed to the City Parks Board for the P D 4 and Residential Cluster Subdivision developments. The director, the staff feels that Director of Recreation and Parks is qualified to provide input on the city of Westminster's current and future recreation needs and has knowledge of recreational regulations, requirements, and practices. Therefore, staff is recommending that the proposed ordinance number 926, as introduced for consideration to the Mayor and Common Council tonight on August 10, 2020, be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the Mayor and Common Council. And that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Depot, and thank you and the staff for recommending the solution to, to this issue. I think it is more appropriate for the director to play this role rather than, than the Parks Board. Anybody have, can I get a motion on this?
Yes, and I understand we're going to do this under an emergency procedure.
Yes, this is an emergency ordinance.
Yeah, let's do this. I'm really happy that you brought this forward. I make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 926 under an emergency basis.
I'll second that.
All right. There's been a motion from Mr. Dayhoff and a second from Ms. Gilbert. Is there any further discussion on this? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please signify. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
It, it, it's nothing big. I just thought I'd say that I think this is something that it's, it, it's good, it's good housekeeping. You know, it's, it's taking a little bit of bureaucracy and red tape out of something that could be easily made by the person in our organization who's absolutely the most qualified to make the decision and to do it quickly without having to have a commission meet monthly or a month out or weeks out or whatever. So I just, I just like, I just like people to know that as a small, small government here, as a, as a municipal government, we do try to make things work smooth and quickly whenever, whenever possible, and I think this is a good step toward that. That's all. I thought, I thought it was a good idea on your part to make this, to make this change, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, and I think that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as Mr. Dayhoff noted, we're doing this as an emergency ordinance, so we'd like to have unanimous vote on this so we can get this done. We do have issues that will be pending soon before the city, and it'd be helpful to, you know, put this process in place as that will be transpiring. So with no further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the vote was unanimous in favor. So thank you all very much. The next issue is adoption of Resolution Number 20-05, a resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster amending the Common Council's rules of order and procedure to provide for the establishment of a standing committee on technology and to clarify the responsibilities of the standing committee on parks and recreation. And the technology piece of this was, you know, actually the mayor's idea, so, Mr. Mayor, would you like to say a few words about this to start the conversation?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I brought this up, first, second, or third meeting, I think, after I was elected, and then things, things got crazy with water and everything else, and, and we recently had a discussion, a brief discussion about it again, but, but, you know, I think it's just time, I, I think there needs to be a, an organized body, elected officials that, that are dedicated to a, a technology committee for multiple reasons. One, we, we are positioning our city as a tech-forward city. We have, we built what was probably the largest project we ever, you know, we ever, we ever, you know, put together before E N R happened, or close to it, was our fiber project, and, you know, we are positioning ourselves and, you know, branding ourselves as a tech-forward city, and we are in a lot of ways, and then there are some ways that we need to catch up, and I think this is a good way to do that. I don't, I don't see it as a committee that meets that often, but once or twice a year as needed. I think it's good to look at the city overall and where we're at in technology and to see if there are any areas, to recognize areas of strength, but also find areas of weakness. I think it's important for a couple other reasons, too. The second reason, I think, is, you know, the way, the way our departments work together, and they're connected by technology, specifically, you look at finance and H R, finance and public works, there's a lot of stuff that works together but doesn't work together when you look at the technology. And I think having, you know, a lot of times when we, we have a discussion about technology, it doesn't neatly fit into one of the other committees, so having its own committee for, you know, for, for Hit my keyboard button that muted me, sorry. But I, I think it's good for that. And the other thing is, we're just, we're just growing our, our, our tech department, you know, I T department's going to grow. That's the one department that we can all, we all, we all know is going to grow over time. You know, technology is a force multiplier, and in a world of municipal government, the number one reason we have to say no or we can't do things that, that are good ideas is money. And with technology being a force multiplier, oftentimes it saves you money or can allow you to do things less expensively and, and even in a, in a better way. You get, you get more quality, it's less cost when technology's implemented correctly. And our, again, our I T department's like growing. I think one of the reasons this, this got back in, on, on the front of my mind is because our I T department is officially out on its own now. We have an I T director, and it's not under finance, so it was just time. I think this is a good move for all those reasons, plus a lot of things I'm forgetting and not even mentioning right now. So that, I think that's, that just about sums it up, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we should get a motion so we can discuss this. We have a motion to adopt the, the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second, there's a second, motion from Mr. Dayhoff, and a second from Mr. Cavaci. Want us to discuss, just want to point out, first, I want to thank the mayor for suggesting this as, as I was drafting the, sort of the operative part of the, the resolution, and Ms. Levin, of course, made it pretty so that we got it, you know, the right format. But as I was reading through it, I just wanted to note that, I noted that the Committee on Parks Recreation did not have the same language that all the other committees did about, you know, such other issues that, you know, concerned its subject matter, you know, would, could be referred to by the legislative body, which is, of course, the mayor and council. So I thought we should, for the sake of consistency, we should add that in so that, you know, all the committees would have, have that similar language. So I took this opportunity to go ahead and put that in while we were adding in the Committee on Technology. Would anybody like to be heard on this?
When are you going to look for our members? Because I'd like to be a member.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Mr. President.
Hearing no further discussion, move on to a vote. Oh, Mr. Cavaci?
No, I, I just wanted to compliment you and the mayor. You know, this was you guys making this happen, and I, I think it's important. I think, like the mayor said, the time is right. I think it's necessary, and thank you for the effort that you both put into this. I know it, it was a lot of work, along with Ms. Levin, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anyone else? All right. Hearing no further discussion, we will put the question. All those in favor of adoption of Resolution Number 20-05, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed say nay? The opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The chair is aware of no unfinished business before the council. We have one item of new business on the agenda, approval of Warner Construction Contract Change Order Number 9. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecorero, and I apologize for the technical difficulty a little bit earlier in the meeting. Change Order Number 9 involves two areas where stormwater is infiltrating through the foundation walls. These leaks are not generating a lot of water and have probably been, been occurring on and off for some time in the opinion of the architect. The removal of the sidewalk in the two areas that are impacted, coupled with the recent excessive rain, is, is likely the cause of more pronounced infiltration. The repair will require excavation on the exterior of the building to expose the foundation wall, identification of where the existing foundation waterproofing is failing, repair of the problem areas, and backfilling of the excavated sites. Staff recommends that this Mayor and Common Council authorize Warner Construction to perform the work that I just outlined through the approval of Change Order Number 9 in the amount of $11,800.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. If I can get a motion, we can go on and have some discussion. Maybe they'd like to move, make a motion on this?
I make a motion to approve the Warner Construction Contract Change Order Number 9.
And I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Motion, motion from Ms. Gilbert and a second from Mr. Dayhoff. Is there any discussion on this? I'd note that Ms. Matthews brought this to our attention some time ago, at least to the finance committee. I'm not sure if we've discussed it with the full council, and we discussed it some time ago with the understanding that we were waiting on the folks on site to let us know when they really thought they needed to do this, and so that, it seems that that time has come when we need to make a decision on it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, I'm not surprised by this at all because historically, Montour House, just up the street, that was located on the community pond in front of where Mr. Yingling's office is located, is about 25 foot of fill. They actually built the building in a filled-in pond that, that had existed there for many, many years. When they dug the foundation for that addition for the, for Carroll County Bank and Trust, they hit water. So I'm not surprised that we need to do this at all, and we need to do a really good job of it now that we have the opportunity to do it. So this is, this is a good thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Anyone else? All right. Hearing no further discussion, move on to vote. All those in favor of Change Order Number 9, please say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and Change Order Number 9 is approved. And that concludes the business we had before us. We'll now move on to departmental reports. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecorero. I wanted to just update everyone on our recruitment for our new H R director. I did get an update last Friday from the Novak Consulting Group. As of that date, we had 64 applications for the position. Based on the profile they gave us, a very well-educated group, the applications came from 17 different states, with the vast majority of those coming from Maryland, not surprisingly, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. So the Novak Consulting Group is in the process of screening the applications and will be providing their next update to me on August 20th, so I did want to let you know that that process is moving forward. With that, I think I will start our reports this evening with Ms. Alan Ceezy.
I, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Alan Ceezy. Ms. Palmer?
I see her name, but she must be still, she's still muted.
Yeah, I think she just came unmuted. Ms. Palmer?
Can you hear me now? Oh, thank you.
Yes, we can.
Sorry. I apologize. Ms. Matthews, I was going to report on the pool improvements bond closing unless you were planning on doing that in your staff report.
I know, I, I probably should have coordinated that with you, Ms. Palmer, but if you wouldn't mind sharing the good news, that would be great.
Certainly. The, the bond closing is scheduled for August 20th. The bonds went out to pricing in the beginning of the month. I don't believe the C D A has actually released the details about the pricing at this point, so we are not at liberty to say, but I will tell you that we received a very favorable interest rate and that the bonds were sold at a premium, which means that the city will realize a significant savings. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Chief, Chief Letwell?
Yes, good evening. So our latest lateral hire, Officer McGowan, has successfully completed his field training, and now he is out on his own in patrol. We do have our four police recruits set to graduate tomorrow afternoon from the Maryland Police Training Commission. The, the academy graduation, unfortunately, will be modified a little bit this year so that it will just be myself from our agency, and then it'll be streamed to family and friends. So we're looking forward to getting the recruits out into field training. We're wrapping up the, the six-month trial of our 12-hour patrol schedule, so we sent out a follow-up survey to personnel this week. Those will be collected by today, by this evening. We've been working on several projects related to state legislation, one related to sexual assault investigations, another related to the benefit of receiving complaints, and then the third is a firearms crimes report for years 2015 through 2019. So each of these bills requires us to make some modifications, so we've been working on those. As Cavaci mentioned, we're now up and running with our law enforcement assisted diversion program. If you'll remember, pre-pandemic, we had received, or we had partnered with the Carroll County Health Department Grant Funded Program. So we now have a social worker in appear and recovery working out of the police department, and we've trained a certain segment of our staff on the program, and we'll be slowly rolling it out to the remainder of our personnel, so we're excited about getting this program underway. Following the latest amendment to the Governor's Executive Order, we continue to have minimal issues of compliance or need for enforcement related to the pandemic, so we're, we're happy about that. And I give kudos, as Councilman Cavaci did also, to both our patrol officers and our detectives. They've done a great job, especially recently, in handling closing some significant criminal investigations, so I'm appreciative of that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Gruber?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. I have some numbers I'd like to report this evening after we were able to assess our fitness center entire month of July standings. So interestingly enough, from July 1st through July 31st, we had 933 people enter the fitness center. Of those 933 check-ins, 278 of those were unique members. So we're seeing about 300 members check in about three different times is really what that equates into. As far as our membership packages, we are now able to more easily determine how many resident packages and how many non-resident packages we have that are viable in our system. Our family membership package, we have 47% non-residents and 53%, I'm sorry, 47% residents and 53% non-residents. Family with childcare membership package is 45% resident, 55% non-resident. Individual memberships, 38% resident, 62% non-resident. Youth and college student, actually, it's youth, college student, and student. Resident is 60% and non-resident is 40%. And I really thought that the youth numbers were promising, especially during this time when most opportunities are not available for youth in our community, that our usage and memberships are up in that category. In addition to that, along that line of thinking, just recently, at the beginning of this month, we added two youth fitness classes. One is yoga for kids, and the other class that we've added is called outdoor recess. And it's just basically a group fitness class for kids where the content and activity changes so that they stay interested and don't actually feel like they are exercising. Another thing important to note with family fitness center operations, after the entire month, looking at our revenue and expenditures, our revenue have exceeded our expenditures by $7,000 in change. So we are sitting in a positive cash position for the family fitness center at this time. Additional items I wanted to report on this evening, the Wakefield Valley Master Plan bid opening occurred on Friday, August 7, thanks to Finance Director Tammy Palmer. She had quite a job. There were 19 respondents, and the bids ranged in price from approximately $63,000 to $235,000. And I just began a preliminary review today, so I can't even report as to why I think the range is so vast. And then lastly, we held a pre-bid meeting today for the family center shower room renovation project. And we had a surprising response to that meeting as well. We had over 20 contractors show up with interest in that particular project. So things are moving along, and that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Glass.
Last Tuesday, on the 4th of August, we had a, in the evening, had a major water main break. And that actually lasted through the final repair until we had the road open, lasted until Wednesday morning on the 5th. The break was at the, pretty close to the intersection of Cranberry Road and Old Manchester. And unfortunately, we did have water interruption for about an hour at the higher elevations that would include, like, East Green Street and Colonial. But it only lasted for about an hour because, once we had the valves down, that's about how long it took to get all the valves down. We were able to use off of stored water in our tanks at that point. So it took all the members of the Utility Maintenance Department, John Dick, my deputy director was on site, as was I, and Councilperson Kevin Dayhoff was there throughout the whole night as well. So we appreciate that help. The leak total was in excess of 330,000 gallons that leaked within that one-hour period, which, you know, that's no small amount of water. That's rival's total output of nearby towns, or Hampstead, for instance. It's almost what they would pump for the entire day. So that leak was, you know, in the range of 5,500 gallons per minute. That was actually pretty tremendous. But you have to remember that it was a 12-inch water main, and that area is about 130 PSI. So once you breach 15 feet of pipe, it doesn't take long for that kind of water to escape. And of course, to damage the road to the point that it was not passable until the next morning as well. So I'm very appreciative to the Utility Maintenance Department for their hard work. They often go as unsung heroes, but they really shine when the time comes. In addition to that, we held a pre-bid meeting for our paving project on the 4th. Bids are due on the 13th. We will have a pre-bid meeting for the INI project on the 12th. And on Friday, the 7th, I met with the consultants to start gearing up for the pilot water reuse work there. We have to fit out for the room and began to line up to purchase some of the items that we're going to have to have for that. Of course, this is all after we have learned that we had the successful grant award. So until then, you know, we're kind of on hold a little bit, but things are really moving forward now, and much faster. So that concludes my report, unless there are questions.
Mr. Depot.
The Board of Zoning Appeals did not hold a meeting this month. The Historic District Commission reviewed an application to place telecommunication antennas on the water tower located in McDaniel's College. It's at the northern terminus of 41st Street. It's adjacent to the historic district that extends up Pennsylvania Avenue. And on Planning Commission this Thursday, there's only two applications. The first is regarding the development plan for the Commerce Center. This is located along 97 at Corporate Center Court and the accompanying site plan for Royal Farm, also located in the development, Commerce Center Development Plan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Davidson.
Hello, yes, we began this month with a phishing email, controlled phishing emails to our users, which kicked off our 2020 security awareness training, as you probably all have seen by now. And now we continue monthly controlled phishing attempts to our users just to keep them on their toes. That's all I have to report. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Has, you sent out, you sent out a training session. Has everyone, has everyone gone ahead and taken that training session that you sent out, Mr. Davidson?
Not as yet. The training session is staggered as it goes out, so not all users have got it yet.
I thought that was a good job. I really appreciated the training session. Thank you.
If there's no further questions, President Pecoraro, I believe that concludes the departmental report for this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. The final item on our agenda is citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the Mayor and Common Council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. It's difficult to allow live comments online during these meetings. And so our solution has been that we've developed is to, as we continue to host these virtual meetings till we return to City Hall, the Mayor and Common Council will still take comments to be sent to our city clerk in writing at comments@westgov.com. And I will, at every meeting, read out the comments we have received. And we have received one for this evening, which I will read. And it is from Mr. Kevin Wagner of 153 East Green Street. He said he wanted to react to Shelley Fulton, who is retiring from the city's rec center gym after 22 and a half years on Wednesday, July 29, 2020. Someone who's made our city of Westminster a great place to live, work, and shop. Her devotion and others like her is what makes Westminster a special town. And thank you to all for your dedication and work. Hats off to her and others. Kevin Wagner. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. And I will say we miss seeing Mr. Wagner at all of our meetings. And that concludes our agenda for this evening and the meeting itself. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, and please stay safe.